Go ahead, Avi.
Sure. Namaste and greetings. I, Avi Sharma, researcher at IMPRI Impact and Policy Research Institute, Prabha Ewamneeti Anusandhan Sanstan, Nai Delhi, extend my warmest welcome to you all to IMPRI Web Policy Learning. It is my pleasure to welcome you all to day three of the Law and Policy Public Youth Fellowship Cohort 4.0 Winter 2024. Today, we gather on a day of profound global significance as it marks the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women. In alignment with the fellowship's overarching theme of inclusivity in peace and conflict resolution, rethinking policy, advocacy and implementation, today's session is dedicated to exploring actionable strategies, innovative policies and advocacy frameworks that can help eliminate violence against women. Together, we aim to foster an environment where justice, equity and inclusivity are not just ideals but realities. Thank you all for being a part of this important dialogue. The chair for this program is Professor Vibhuti Patelji, distinguished professor IMPRI. The lead advisor and legal hands-on sessions expert is advocate Dr. Shalu Nikamji, visiting senior fellow IMPRI, advocate, author and researcher gender and human rights. The conveners for this course are Dr. Ajay Gudavarti ji, advocate Celine Thomas ji, Dr. Simi Mehta ji and Dr. Arjun Kumar ji. The expert panel for today includes advocate Flavia Agnes ji, women's rights lawyer, co-founder Majlis Legal Centre Mumbai, advocate Dr. Shalu Nikam ji, visiting senior fellow IMPRI, advocate, author and researcher gender and human rights. We will also share the course outline and reading resources in your email for your kind attention. Before we start today's session, I would like to state the housekeeping announcements. Please join the meeting on time. There will be a Q and A session after each presentation. Share your questions on the Q and A box. The questions must not be posted as an anonymous attendee. Ensure that your questions are precise. Refrain from making general comments in the questions to save time. To begin today's session, I would like to invite a chair, Professor Vibhuti Patelji, visiting distinguished professor IMPRI to give her opening remarks. We welcome you ma'am, over to you.
Yeah. Thank you, Avi Sharma, for introducing the course and also welcoming the participants. I too begin with the welcoming all the participants and today's expert, Advocate Flavia Agnes. Today, we are on the third day of our course, Law and Public Policy Youth Fellowship. And I thank Dr. Ajay Gudavarti, Dr. Advocate Celine Thomas, Dr. Simi Mehta, Dr. Arjun Kumar for putting this course together. And today, we are also going to have legal hands-on and interactive session with advocate Dr. Shalu Nikam, who has been one of the mainstays of these gender-based violence courses over last four years. Today, it's a very important day because from 21st, 25th November to 10th December, we are going to have fifteen days of activism. And this was the decision taken way back in 1993, nearly more, over a three decades back where in Vienna, women's organizations and feminists from all over the world, they gathered and they prevailed upon the UNHRC to accept women's rights as human rights. Before that, the scenario was very depressing because every time we brought up women's question, they would say it is a personal problem, right from the issue of pre-birth elimination of girl child, to female genital mutilation of African sisters or the question of extremely brutal form of intimate partner violence that many Latin American countries feminists have reported. And the three decades of very sustained campaign, also formation of shelter home, for women's movement gave a slogan of personal is political and the link between personal and political and how this misogynist and hyper masculinity and the patriarchal control over women's sexuality, fertility and labour result in very gory form of violence against women and that recognition by the UN system, that was very important. And what we saw that we women's movement decided to keep this issue center stage because for five thousand years of human civilization, violence against women and gender-based violence had been used for control of women and girls and also keep them at the lowest bottom of the society. So, let us have a recap of previous two sessions so that Advocate Flavia can also realize, she can pitch her lecture accordingly. So, on day one, we talked about the societal inclusion in peace negotiations as an agenda item. Peace is not only the question of only global peace or the territorial peace in the context of territorial war, but also gender-based violence and which happens in every, each and every domain of the society. We also talked about three peace agreements which are very important in the second, in the history, in a post-Second World War, Oslo Agreement of 1993 where the Palestine got the recognition of national sovereignty, Belfast Agreement in 1998 where Northern Ireland peace processes began, and Columbia Peace Agreement where feminists played a very important role, thousand feminists they signed, Declaration of Feminist Foreign Policy where they asked for paradigm shift from national security to human security and demanded comprehensive rural reform, political participation and of armed conflict, illicit drugs, transition, transitional justice to the victims. And it is in this backdrop, we got our keynote address by Mr. Sandeep Chachara, who talked about the decolonization of peace building and democracy. And he also gave the collective wisdom of the views from the global south. And he also talked about the decolonization of political economy, decolonization of currency and economic integration based on national currencies, no to sanction countries, decolonization of global system. And he quoted theoreticians and practitioners like Franz Fanon and Ivan Illich, Paulo Freire, William W. Lewis, and after that, we had Rita Manchanda, who is a feminist and who has devoted very valuable years of her life in redefining agency and resilience and narrativizing women in war and peace. And she gives so many personal experiences of her involvement in the peace-making, peace-building and peace-building processes. And she talked about the expansion of understanding of military security to human security, feminist scholarship which has mobilized the local agency and advocacy and networking at transnational, regional, national and local level and the civil society organization's role in 1325. And also how we can make the nation-state more responsive to domestic peace because she also talked about what's happening in Manipur, what happens in Kashmir, how the weapon of sexual violence is being used to demoralize the community. And then we also had a very important concern about how the political issues that can be politicization of gender-based violence is required. On day two, we had Professor Swaran Singh, who spoke about the, who deconstructed the term peace in a context of the different sensibilities and how the different civilizations and different nation-state perceive peace in a different way. What is the occidental and oriental understanding of peace? How do Chinese or Africans or other countries, in Latino countries, they interpret peace? What is the internalization of peace and externalization of peace? And then we had Dr. Glaston Xavier, who talked about navigating displacement and peace and policies and practices for refugees, forced migration and also in a conflict zone. And what all we need to do in terms of stakeholder engagement, data-driven policy on conflict, we hardly have any data on how many people are damaged or destroyed in any war or any conflict. We need to have inclusive framework, inclusive language and also the question of monitoring and evaluation of laws and implementation. Continuing with that exercise, we today, we are going to focus more on law and laws and its implementation. And that's why we have a very veteran feminist, very erudite, scholarly, public intellectual, Advocate Flavia Agnes with us, who will enlighten us about reforming legal systems, feminist insights into gender violence in India, over to you.
You over to me?
Yeah.
Shall I start?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Vibhuti and IMPRI for inviting me today for this session. As you know, today is a very important day, very auspicious day. We're starting this sixteen-day activism on gender-based violence, against gender-based violence. And a lot of activities are taking place all over the globe, in fact, in every country, starting from today till December tenth, which is Human Rights Day. And it's a very important initiative by the UN to mark this sixteen days, sixteen days in particular to focus on gender-based violence. And when I talk about law and public policy here, my focus is going to be about the women's movement and women's movement's initiative in bringing about reforms in law over the last forty years to deal with gender-based violence and then the lapses in the system that are there and the attempts to plug that. So, this, we started with, so we talk about law and public policy and peace-making initiatives. We're always looking in the public domain. We are looking at societal issues and women's concerns not necessarily reflected because they are considered very personal, they are considered private, they are considered domestic. And so, peace-making efforts. In a way, I ignore the necessity of bringing peace within the private spaces of women's lives. So, feminist movement in India sort of tried to break this barrier, brought women's issues into the public domain. Firstly, with the anti-rape campaign in the eighties where a young girl was raped in the police station, molested, raped, young sixteen-year-old illiterate tribal orphan girl, Mathura. And then, the Sessions Court acquitted the policeman because there were no marks of injury on her body. The High Court, the Bombay High Court, Nakutben reversed it and said that a quiet acquiescence is not consent. The lower court had said she had not fought enough. That's why she had agreed. And the reason, the evidence for that is there were no marks of injury on her body. When it went to the Supreme Court against the conviction by the High Court, Supreme Court reversed it, went back to the Sessions Court judgment and upheld the view that she's a liar, Mathura is a liar and it's necessary to have injury on her body to resist to such an extent that she should have injury, otherwise it is construed as consent. So, this was a major issue and and this Supreme Court judgment is the law of the land, just like a statutory law. Supreme Court verdict is also law of the land. And the Supreme Court, High Court and the magistrate court and Sessions Court is supposed to follow that. This was a major concern and that's why the campaign started in 1980, seventy-nine, eighty, against this judgment. And both Vibhuti and me have very actively participated in this campaign. And according to me, this is a major policy-level intervention and peace-building effort to bring in dignity to women, particularly and secure their safety in public and private places. So, this resulted in law reform of the nineteen eighty-three and certain necessary changes were brought about. And rape then began to be considered as a grave offense with ten years punishment, seven years mandatory for ordinary rapes, ten years for gang rape, aggravated situation rape, minors, children, pregnant women, etc. So, this was a major victory for the women's movement. And this opened up the issue for discussing and debating rape in public. Till then, it was not discussed in public, it was all in high tones. So, this opened up the windows, so to say, on women's sexuality, their sexual choices, their autonomy, their need for dignity, their need for respect. So, it had wide repercussions, not just on the particular case or a particular issue, but it opened up the windows for us to intervene in many other areas as well. Alongside, there was another issue also here, again, very private within the domestic sphere, that was called dowry-related violence and dowry deaths. Now, the dowry term wasn't very limiting. It was not addressing all kinds of violence. But at least it brought up the issue of safety of married women in their marital homes and brought in certain laws to protect women in the criminal law regime. And particularly if there were unnatural deaths of women within seven years of marriage, there was ten-year punishment for the accused and the burden of proving the offense shifted. This is a major shift in that sense within the criminal law that otherwise the prosecution has to prove beyond reasonable doubt and offense. But here, the defense has to prove, the accused has to prove that he did not do it. So, this was a major success story because these crimes happen in the private spaces of their domestic situation and usually there are no witnesses. Like when a murder happens in the public, at least there are bystanders, people who have witnessed it. But when a woman is killed in a home, in the husband's home, all the witnesses are accused persons and independent witnesses are not there. So, most of the cases is to go scot-free, is to go under the accidental, under the category of accidental death. And law was not effective at all. So, for, because of this reason, we needed to have a law. And in nineteen eighty-three, we got 498A, which described cruelty by husband and his family members upon the woman by orally or physical violence or emotional violence, etc. And at least this issue started coming out in the public domain. So, nineteen eighty-six was the next law change in this and it brought in for the P zero four B, which says that within seven years of marriage, if a woman dies an unnatural death, then this law will come into effect and then the husband family has to prove that they did not do it. Even if a woman has committed suicide, it will still be suicide induced by the husband family and by their behavior. A bit went to suicide became a very important issue. So, these are two very important issues that have stayed with us. As recently, we know the Calcutta case, Atikar Hospital and Research Center case there where medical trainee doctor was so brutally raped and murdered and it had such a major repercussions and major protests by doctors across the state. And it's still going on, the protest is still going on, though there was a new law brought in immediately to appease the protesters and it became mandatory to give death penalty in rape cases. But according to me, a stringent law does not necessarily bring in changes on the ground. It only becomes as ornamental cover-up for what has happened. What we need is safety and security on the ground level. We need respect for women. We need, at every, every stakeholder level, we need to create awareness and consciousness. So, these are two major issues, but there were many other minor issues also that came. One of the major issue that came up is safety at the workplace. The POSH Act came in two thousand three thirteen, but before that, in nineteen ninety-seven, there was Vishaka Guidelines by Justice Verma, who in relationship in the context of a case of a grassroots worker who was raped by the influential people in her village, the Bowery Devi, the famous Bowery Devi case, where again, the lower court acquitted the accused persons on a very casteist ground, saying that upper caste men will not touch a lower caste women, how can they actually rape? Now, this case is gone on appeal and we don't know what has happened to the case. But this one NGO called Vishaka brought this issue to the Supreme Court, saying that women have no protection at their workplace. There's no safety, there's no protection at all. So, that space has to be protected. So, then we got the Vishaka Guidelines, where internal complaints committees have to be constituted in all organized sector. And a woman who is harassed at the workplace doesn't have to go to the police station, she can lodge a complaint within her own office administrative setup and they are supposed to look at it. This got extended to unorganized sector in two thousand thirteen by the act that, so nineteen ninety-seven, we had the guidelines. But two thousand thirteen, we got an act, Protection of Women at the Workplace, the POSH Act. And I don't know personally because I'm not working in this area and in this setups, but how much change is there? But definitely changes come, greater or lesser extent. And today, we see a lot of women fighting cases, fighting complaints before the internal complaints committee. But there is also a district level committee that is set up for unorganized sector women to ensure their safety because they are the most vulnerable, more than the organized sector because they work in the public, they work in construction labor, domestic work where there is no protection for them. So, this awareness has to be created and a local NGOs must help and support such women to file these complaints at the relevant time and also create general awareness at the workplaces. So, this is another major intervention by women's movement about changing the public policy and about changing their views about women and the culture of women working, culture of women's respect, culture of women's dignity. Apart from this, we had other, other issues also. One major issue is trafficking of women for sex work against their wishes. And there's also the obscenity law that came. Using women's bodies in movies, in posters, in advertisement, etc., in a very sexual manner, very provocative manner. And of course, there are women who are into this, whether they are models, whether they are, their bodies are used. And similarly, in trafficking also, women are there themselves who might be willing agents, willing partners into this project. But what we need to see is overall picture, not just a limited thing that's individual women, but the policy level and at the, at the level of societal norms. This is where our work has to be located and we need to work here in much greater extent. This is the broad overview that I am giving you. Apart from this, there are a lot of other issues that women's movement has taken up regarding safety and dignity of women at every, every place. And for a long time, women have been struggling to place their issue within the public domain. But I think with the enactment of the Protection of Women from Domestic Violence Act in two thousand twelve, as well as sexual harassment at work, at two thousand thirteen, we have made great strides and we are at a level where such laws are in place. What is not, what is lacking still is the implementation where we have to work very hard to actually bring the gains of the law reform to the survivors, to the affected people. Now, very few NGOs actually do this work. Much more NGOs are involved in the campaign work to bring in the laws and the reforms. But on a day-to-day level, to work with the system to change it is a more daunting task. And Madhvis is involved with this task of bringing in, making the laws work on the ground, whether it is a domestic violence or a sexual violence survivor that you are working with. And this involves training of the stakeholders, creating awareness among them, explaining the law to them so that they are able to use it. But it also works, it has also to work with the system. And when a case happens, whether it is a case of domestic violence or a sexual violence, what is the mechanism that comes into place and how a survivor needs support at the ground level? Because the state does not provide, though they mount it, they do not provide the support. There are supposed to be protection officers to protect women, but even the protection officers lack in their support to the survivors. And for sexual violence, it is the state who's supposed to provide the support through the public prosecutors. But even public prosecutors and the law says that the judge has to be very sensitive. As far as possible, a woman judge, a public prosecutor has to be very sensitive, has to have a minimum years of experience and preferably women should be appointed. Court room has to be child-friendly, women-friendly and preferably a woman judge must be appointed there. But all this change and also direct cross-examination should not happen. The question should be given to the judge and the judge will explain them to the survivor so that she is not intimidated by the mechanism of cross-examination. And she's able to depose with calm and quietness and without fear, with a fear in the courtroom. She is not daunted by the system. Now, all these procedures are there and only an NGO intervention can make it actually happen that this law or whatever the protective measures are there are actually implemented during a trial. So, Madhvis has a survivor support program and we have helped many young girls who are abused publicly as well as within their own family. And one of the major issues that have come up is sexually abused by their own fathers or family members, which are never coming out otherwise, but only because of mandatory reporting. Now, you have more and more cases coming up of this, particularly when a young girl is pregnant. She's twelve years, thirteen years, fourteen years. Under some guys, she is taken to a public hospital and there it is, her pregnancy is discovered and there a case is filed, complaint is filed that this girl has been abused. But she is not aware that the system that she has to go through in order to prove the case. So, this is where we come in and in such cases, we meet the victim. We explain to her what is the role, what is weighted in the criminal justice system. And we are with her when the case comes up in the court and explain to her what is going to happen in the court, what is the role of the judge, what is the role of the prosecutor, what is the role of the defense lawyer and what is expected of her in the courtroom so she is not daunted by the system. So, while it is important to bring in laws and policies for their implementation, we need to work at the ground level to actually make it happen. Whether, and our areas of work are two, domestic violence and sexual violence. This is what we have engaged in and this is what we have highlighted all the time. And this is where we make our smallest little interaction. I want to emphasize here, Madhvis is a very small organization. It works very locally, but reach is not huge, but we see it as a model. We see it as something that can be implemented within the system. And if you work with dedication and if you work with concentration and sensitivity, you can bring in the changes in the system. The proof of it is that we have very low commission rate in the, in a country, in a state, etc., which is around twenty-six, twenty-seven percent. But in the cases that we have intervened, our commission rate has gone up to sixty-eight percent, seventy percent. And that's a huge difference. So, that is just to highlight what can be possible if the relevant intervention is made by civil society groups and how we can Uh how we can intervene with a feminist perspective uh to give justice to the victims. I end here and I am open to questions. If you have any questions, I'm ready to answer them.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Uh thank you so much, Advocate Flivia Agnes, Women's Right Lawyer, Co-Founder Majlis Legal Centre Mumbai. For your enlightening address on reforming legal systems, feminist insights into gender violence in India. We deeply value your insights and thought-provoking perspectives. I would now like to invite our chair, Bhuti Ma'am, to share her remarks.
Thank you, Advocate Flivia Agnes, for such a lucid and chronologically meticulously narrated. Profile of Women's Movement's role in combating gender-based violence. My question is that I just wanted to you to explain processes that Majlis is adopting. In terms of supporting women survivor of violence in the at the police station, in the court, this thing and in the community. And what kind of for women and children both. So if those processes are explained, the people will know that they they can also do similar work in their areas.
Uh now we have for sexual violence, we have mandatory reporting. That means if a case comes to light with any stakeholder, with a with a doctor, the community, etcetera, it gets reported. We have an agreement with the police that when a case of sexual abuse comes to them, they are supposed to inform us. So that's where we start, but by the FIR is already filed. But uh the uh the investigations are at the very early stage. Uh so that's where we uh call it survivor support and we call it first response. I immediately when the case happens, go and meet the victim and ask her the processes that have been followed and what kind of help she needs. And then we take it to the next level, beginning recording the statement of the victim. Uh informing the progress that is happening, looking at what is happening in the hospital, medical reports, etcetera. Witness statements, etcetera. We look at all the papers, case papers. And keep in touch with her till the trial begins. It can happen two years later, three years later. But uh be in touch with her. In the meanwhile, she will have several issues. Uh because of the stigma created, she may drop out of school. Uh the her parents might have to shift the house, they cannot stay in the same uh. Uh area, etcetera. If it happens in the home, she would need a shelter home, she would need a space. A safe place to be in, etcetera. So we uh look at all that and each case is different. And our support has to be fine-tuned to her needs. It cannot be a general support in every case. And in every case, we have a support persons uh with her uh in being in touch with her. Looking at uh the difficulties and challenges that she is facing, etcetera. And when the uh actually the trial starts, uh we help, we call it an office in fact. Uh we help her to uh refresh her memory, uh help her to uh go through actually the case paper, what she has said in the FIR. Uh because usually if she is not local, uh Marathi speaking. Uh the FIR will be recorded in Marathi, but her language, she is familiar with may not be uh Marathi, she might be from South India, North India, etcetera. So uh to bridge these gaps is what we actually do and then uh be with her. When the trial happens, because these are closed-door trials, uh they are not open uh to public. Uh so what happens is that it's all male surrounding, the defense lawyer is male, uh public prosecutor is male. Uh the police officers are male and the judges may also be male. So in that she is the lone woman or lone child who has to depose. So having a support person. Uh really helps her to get her confidence, to answer very coherently and without fear. And the state now, under uh also the state can also appoint a support person. CWC can appoint a support person, but the support person has to be in touch with her. And know the proceeding and guide her accordingly. And this is what we do uh and then. Also, when the final verdict comes, which can happen after three months, six months, etcetera, can make her what is exactly happening. Otherwise, suddenly she if the accused is from the same neighborhood and he is acquitted and she sees him uh roaming around. She feels so shattered that my whole trouble has gone to waste and that guy is out. Without any uh implications. So uh to be with her, to advise her, to guide her. To uh when the acquittal happens, to provide safety measures that will protect her uh and. Uh so that he is not able to intimidate her afterwards in the same locality, etcetera. So all these small, small gestures, case-wise, we need to do and uh and each case, as I said, is different. According to what the survivor needs, that kind of support has to be provided. So this kind of intense work. Cannot be done at a very vast level, we are not all over Maharashtra, for instance. We are doing it very locally, but it needs to be done at a wider scale. Uh in every district, there has to be programmed like this. So that victim uh the conviction rate will improve, improve, victim will get support. For the Domestic Violence Act, we uh file cases or we file it through the legal aid. And the measures that are provided under the law, like for instance, protection, injunctions. Maintenance, custody, etcetera. Uh we try to make a simple, you can make a simple application. And put it in the magistrate court and provide and ask for these reliefs and once the relief comes. Woman will find much more uh secure, feel much more secure because now he cannot throw her out. He cannot threaten to throw her out, he cannot threaten to snatch her children away. She will get maintenance, not every is uh it's such a story and many times the husbands do not pay maintenance. But then they take the next step, that if he doesn't pay their maintenance, then how do you execute the court orders? How do you see that she actually gets the money what the court has found this? So this is our work regarding domestic violence. Now here also you need to uh uh streamline this and make it a state intervention. We do have protection officers under the Domestic Violence Act, but many times they they see their key uh role as only. Uh filing the initial complaint or filing the uh the putting the case in the magistrate court. They don't see it as a long-term uh support they need to give or a long-term intervention that they have to do. Apart from this, there's also the outlook question. How do you support a victim? Uh how do you actually, uh whatever the law says, do you actually do it for the victim? How do you actually intervene? So this has been uh, so we have to see that the state does it. It is not enough that Madhvis does it and NGO does it. So we work very closely with the state protection officers. Uh legal aid department and we see that the case is spread through the legal department, legal aid department. So that they are also sensitized and we monitor their work closely so that uh the woman gets the relief.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Uh now I would like to open the floor for questions and we have a question in the chat box by Shabnam G. Shabnam G, if you could unmute yourself and ask your question.
Are you able to unmute, Shabnam G? Hello?
Ma'am, I I don't think so. I'll read out the question.
Yes, yeah, she has unmuted.
She hasn't, okay. Please go ahead. Ma'am, should I read the question?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Okay, so the question uh and the question says, when we abolish triple Talak, there were many organizations. And the Indian National Congress who opposed the bill, which was rather great for Muslim women. I'm a Muslim girl, so she is a Muslim girl and often I hear my. Hear her say that triple Talak's abolition was wrong and anti-Islamic. How do we deal with this mindset as it is quite misogynistic? And your comment on Delhi High Court allowing child marriage of a fifteen-year-old, citing it is permitted as per Sharia. Isn't it unconstitutional and discriminatory for girls and women in India?
Shabnam has also written that she is not able to speak, so we should allow her later on if she wants to debate it. Yeah.
Very complicated question and I'm glad you brought it up uh. Uh about the triple Talak arbitrary uh instant uh triple Talak. Uh there have been uh several court decisions even before the case come up, came up in the Supreme Court. Right from nineteen eighty onwards by different judges who have said this is not the Islamic way of giving Talak. This is a misuse or uh it is a this distortion of what is provided uh under the Quran. And it has to be every uh after every month, four to three consecutive months. And there has to be a reason for that and only then he can pronounce Talak. He cannot just one day get up and announce Talak. Now, that has been a practice, but this has been popularized in the media that a Muslim husband can uh. Pronounce Talak on his wife at any time and once a Talak is pronounced, there is no going back, there is no period of reconciliation, etcetera. So that issue came up very strongly and then the court upheld the earlier judgment. And gave guidelines that it cannot happen this way and uh it has to be done in a. Uh in 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 a Quranic manner, the way Quran provides for that. So the we were also very much part of this litigation and we explained the earlier judgments. And also uh we said that those judgments should be upheld. And the court did exactly that, those earlier judgments were upheld and rather than just panning uh triple Talak. It has said that it should be done by the Quranic principles. Later on, uh the government brought in a law punishing anybody who uh. Announces triple Talak, uh the criminal punishment for the person who arbitrarily uh pronounces divorce. Now issue here is, once a divorce is pronounced, the Muslim Muslim wife believes that she is divorced. And even if you put the husband in jail or whatever, it's not giving her any relief. What she needs is maintenance, what she needs is her uh mehara amount, um her. Uh three months either period, uh she is maintaining special maintenance and then thereafter her security, all that. And we need to look at it in a very complex manner and provide her that kind of support. So this is your first part of your question. The second part of your question about the Delhi High Court holding it, it uh. Children's marriage as valid. Uh I'm not aware of this particular judgment. But I think there has to be a uniform law regarding the age of marriage. And under eighteen, all child marriages should not be allowed, should be prohibited. As per the law, there is already a law in place. And you cannot make an exception saying that under Muslim law, uh fifteen years can marry. I think the judge had a had a erroneous view of the Muslim law and the Quranic law. And we need to change that, create more public awareness and and the uh age of marriage. Or child marriage, of married of twelve, fifteen, sixteen-year-old girls should be stopped across the country. And this is one minimum uh uh minimum requirement that needs to be followed. Uh everywhere. So uh child marriage will not only happen among the Muslims. They happen also among the tribals, they happen among all the underprivileged groups, etcetera. And raising standard of living, educational levels, etcetera, has a much greater value. On the raising child marriage uh marriage age of uh girls. Uh earlier it is kind of, if you see in the nineteenth century, etcetera, the whole issue of child marriage were upper caste. The upper caste women were uh getting married before the age of twelve or before reaching puberty. Uh so that their purity is uh well uh protected and they are not contaminated by. Sexual intercourse before marriage. But as the educational levels improved, as the standard of living improved. Uh uh upper caste communities stopped uh child marriage and the girls are now being educated. But this is now gone to the lower caste and lower community. And this is where uh the problem lies. And we need to work towards improvement of social standards, educational levels, etcetera. And thereby the child marriage will automatically risk.
Thank you so much, ma'am. I hope this answers the question Shabnam G raised. Do we have another questions?
From Shabnam Batul, if you can speak, please go ahead. Shabnam G, yeah.
Yes, she said it happened in Haryana.
Yeah, she has written. Abhi perhaps you can read it out.
Sure, ma'am.
Yeah.
So ma'am, she has uh said that this happened in Haryana and Punjab as well where the high court allowed child marriages. Decide the Sharia as well as Muslim personal law. Many opposed the Uniform Civil Code, but despite diversity, everybody will have one law to follow the Indian law.
Can you repeat the question? I uh I'm not able to get the entire question.
So ma'am, uh what she has mentioned is this happened in Haryana and Punjab as well, where the high court had allowed child marriages. So the they cite that decide the Sharia law as well as the Muslim personal law. And many oppose the Uniform Civil Code, but despite diversity, everybody will have one law to follow, that is the Indian law.
One law to follow, that is the.
Indian law.
Oh, okay. Uh now this, I don't want to get into the Uniform Civil Code debate because it is very complex, it is community-based. It's made some communal in many instances, sort of communities are opposing it, they don't want this law. But I am a firm believer in reform from within, the reform within the community has to happen. But the community has to uh go along with it, only then it will have impact. You cannot impose it from the top. I haven't said this, but now uh with this government, there is a lot of effort. Now, Uttarakhand has already brought in a Uniform Civil Code. Uh but they have uh basically uh uh enforced the Hindu law upon the Muslims and wanted a uniform civil code. What we do need is the changing uh social relationships. Um gender relationships, etcetera, have no law for them. So if we have to have a uniform law, we need to have a more complex discussion, debates and have a law that is framed. Which is not just taking on the Hindu law, but having various principles built into it. Uh regarding same-sex, uh uh LGBTQ issues, many other issues that are there. We need to uh look at them and see that what kind of a law do we need. Now, our government will not be open to this. While they are wanting the Uniform Civil Code for Muslims. They're not ready to change the Hindu law and then they're thinking Hindu law is perfect and it's got all the remedies. And this is where the Muslim Personal Law Board is opposing it. So and they move out of this contentious area. And we have to uh come out in a broader realm, taking up issues that affect women. And marginalized communities, etcetera, and then have a law that is uh protecting their dignity. And protecting the women from marginalized communities.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
I hope my answer was satisfactory. What is it?
Thank you, ma'am. Now, uh I would like to ask the participants if there are any more questions for ma'am. Thank you, ma'am, for your inspiring and engaging talk with us. It's always a pleasure learning from you. We look forward to having you at a future IMPRI event as well. Moving on with the next session for today, I would like to invite Advocate Dr. Shalu Nikamji. Visiting Senior Fellow IMPRI, Advocate, Author and Researcher, Gender and Human Rights for a session. On Legal Hands-on and Interactive Session. We welcome you, ma'am. The floor is yours.
Yeah, uh thank you so much. And first of all, good evening to all of you. Sorry I joined late and. Uh you know, Kavya ma'am, the actor is always so inspiring and you know, we all uh you know, get. Uh so much of energy from her, but today uh what I will share is basically more about uh. Uh you know, general uh uh thing about uh violence against women. So today, my, sorry. Yeah, today my topic is about uh violence against women, backlash and resistance. So basically, first of all, I will speak about uh what is International Day of Violence Against Women. Now, this is the sixteen days of activism on gender-based vi- uh violence, which commences every year on twenty fifth of November. On International Day of Violence Against Women and ends on tenth of December, which is a. Or International Day of Violence Against Women and ends on tenth of December, which is a Human Rights Day. And this campaign has been launched globally in the decade of nineteen nineties. The purpose is to highlight centuries of oppression on women and pervasive breach of human rights. And this is happening worldwide and basically it advocates, you know, for the rights of women. And against the violation, you know, all kind of violations. So the theme for the year twenty twenty four is every ten minutes a woman is killed. Hashtag no excuse, unite to end violence against women. And this year is more important because we will also be celebrating thirtieth anniversary of Beijing Declaration and Platform. For Action in twenty twenty five, Beijing Declaration, some of you, you know, we were not part of it, so. It took place in nineteen ninety five where many of the NGOs, they came together globally. And they talk about that, you know, women's equality and girls and women's rights everywhere. So, but what the data is showing is that. The nearly one in three women experience violence in their lifetime, adolescent girls are particularly at the risk. One in four women are being abused by their partners. In twenty twenty three, at least fifty one thousand one hundred women were murdered by their partners. Studies also show that sixteen to fifty eight percent of women globally experienced technology facilitated. Kind of gender-based violence and seventy percent of women. In conflict wars and humanitarian crises, experience gender-based violence. We are witnessing that in Gaza, you know, how women and children are specifically denied food, medicine and other basic necessities. Kind of, you know, provisions. Sexual violence, historically, we have seen that in wars and conflict situation. That is the more, you know, kind of a weapon which is being used. So the machinery of the war really work in a way that destroys women and children the most. So this is the data, you know, we have about crime against women in India. It says that India reports fifty one cases of crime against women every hour. Over four point four last cases were reported in twenty twenty two, this is the report by National Crime Record Bureau. And when I talk about violence against women, I'm not saying only physical, mental or, you know, other kind of violence. It also include denial of rights and denial of rights which may happen within the tribal areas. Where, you know, tribals are being denied their right to forest and. Or denial of right to land or, you know, so many other kind of way the things really work. And this is the, you know, the pictures which emerged in New India. Where every day you see severe forms of violence, we are seeing and also we are seeing resistance from women. And I think these images of women will remain etched in the history and memory of India of twenty first century. So globally authoritarianism is rising everywhere. And women are facing severe forms of backlash where misogyny pervades not only in the language and action of the political leaders. But it also permeates across, on the street and online. Sexism is threatening women everywhere. We know that in recent years, the Supreme Court of the USA overturned decision in Roe versus Wade. And which resulted in denying of abortion rights to women. Also since Donald Trump has won the election, a few hours later, the far-right slogan, your body, my choice began trending. Which sparks misogyny messages such as you know, you no longer have rights. Were sent to women, users of social media. Now, this onslaught of unchecked resentment reveals that those men do not treat women with dignity as equals. Rather, they view women as inferiors. In response, the women in US, some of they have, you know, initiated digital movement called four B or four noes. This radical movement earlier was initiated in South Korea and propagates no marriage, no dating, no sex and no communication with men. It rejects the heteronormative expectations and raise concerns around patriarchy, precarity, consumerism and capitalism. In Afghanistan, we all know that, you know, how the Taliban is depriving girls of schooling. So the report says that within three years of their rule, they have deployed one point four million girls of from schooling. And putting the future of, you know, entire generation in danger. In Iran, this video was circulated and this picture was there on social media a few days back. And the world has seen how a student was harassed for hijab by the dress code enforcers and she protested in a unique way. Later, she was arrested, the Iranian government declared the girl as mentally unstable. A report emerged later says that the government is planning to send women revolting against hijab to mandatory psychiatric facility. Rather, hijab removal treatment clinics have been proposed to set up to forcibly enforce the piece of clothing. Meanwhile, multiple women political prisoners are facing risk of execution and false charges. The Centre for Human Rights in Iran stated that four women have been falsely charged of armed rebellion. And sentenced to death in July twenty twenty four. So after a decade of deliberations on human rights and raising slogans such as women's rights are human rights. Few handful of men are occupying power as religious and political leaders and are deciding the fate of women. They are deciding what women should wear or whom should they marry and even controlling their wombs. So India has also imposed such ban, you know, a few months back. Where, you know, the Muslim girls have been denied education for wearing hijab in educational institutions. So the question which comes up here is that why few men are, you know, deciding what women should do or not do. The women's movement globally and locally, we are demanding various freedoms. But these men in power are doing exactly the opposite. In recent years, within homes, public spaces, digital spaces, violence is increasing. Not only in numbers but also in civility, scope and outreach. So when women, when UN and other agencies are developing literature on human rights and developing indexes to measure progress. In terms of empowerment, you know, we are demanding safety and security. But at the same time, extreme violence is being normalized and legitimized. In other words, resistance and oppression continue at the same time with brutal violence. There is, you know, further resistance and then there is more brutal form of violence. So, you know, this is kind of spiral of violence which has been continuing. In France, you may have heard this case of Giselle Pellicott. She's a seventy two year old woman who was sedated, drugged and raped by her husband and fifty other men. For nine years, you know, she faced this trauma. And it shows that how women are being deceived by the system and institutions which promise them safety, comfort and justice. The trial in this case is still going on, but the videos and documents which were found during investigation. They indicate the terrible nature of violence. This case has raised questions regarding consent, betrayal in marriage, digital violence, pornography. Toxic masculinity and pervasive rape culture. It shows how masculine codes operate where none of the men invited to rape her complained against it. And all this was happening online. So the case show how any man can be a predator. Or as Miss Pellicott says, he could be any man, be it our family or friend. Important is her reaction, you know, in this case. It's her courage and her determination to speak for all victims and survivors of violence. Despite being hurt, her zeal to support the survivors is empowering. In her response to her ordeal, she said she felt betrayed, broken and completely destroyed. She precisely stated that this shame should change sight. We have also seen this video of, you know, how women in parliament resisted. Against the anti-people law. So globally, the government pay lip services to the issue of women empowerment. But they have failed to stop the culture of violence with impunity. The backlash is evident from the fact that when women become vocal in public domain in politics and journalism. Or the women human rights defenders, they are being targeted intentionally both offline and online. With increasing digitalization, the videos of horrific crimes are being circulated in social media without any destruction or control. The spectacle of brutal violence evokes sadistic pleasure. And not only women's bodies are objectified and commodified, but repeated pleasure is obtained in sharing the dreadful images. While normalizing and legitimizing violence against women. This misogyny is so deeply permeated that last week in India, a huge crowd gathered in Patna. To see the film trailer of Pushpa two, which was deemed to be a deeply misogynist movie by the critiques. However, no such crowd gathered to demand justice for, you know, violence against women in Manipur. In Unau, in Hathras, the wrestler's case and so many other cases, we saw how justice remained elusive. The complaints or FIRs are not registered easily, the police and administration frequently stand with the users. Victims are being forced to accept the illegitimate demands of abusers. The voices of complainants are forcefully being silenced. Women are being penalized for demanding justice in many cases. In many cases of domestic violence, the penalty is being imposed on complainants. And even in the cases of rape, there are the judgment which says, you know, that the woman, the man could, you know, the teta iraqi and. The cases could be disposed of. So not only the case of Bilkespano, but in many other cases, we have witnessed how. The rapists and murderers have been welcomed and garlanded after they are being released on bail. The society which still prefers sun is complicit in crime when it takes pride in such violent, toxic masculinity. The society weaponizes violence to target political opponent is as guilty of the crime as criminals themselves. The institutions, police courts, national commissions are much the part of larger network which silence the complainants. And therefore are guilty of crime. So. When, and the thing is that, you know, when women demanded bake off Azadi. As you have seen in Naveha's protest, or what the state is giving is the laws such as La Fjihad. Which is denying autonomy to women, you know, to decide whom should they marry. So tragically, we are living in a country where the judges are relying on divinity. And not on constitutional values while pronouncing judgments. So more so in the matters pertaining to to women, religion, divinity, superstitions and myths. All work together to deny justice as we have heard from the previous presentation. So from Matara to Manurma and Hathras rape case, we have seen how justice is denied. Women in police station, courts and communities are chasing justice, but as more they chase, farther it goes. So the indifference and hostility exist in the public spaces, courts and police station. Creating disillusion of justice. The more we demand justice, you know, the more the women voices are suppressed. And to counter such violence, in many cases, women have deployed diverse and unique methods. As we have witnessed in the case of protests by the Nagam mothers in Manurma's rape case. So for the new students, I can say that, you know, if you remember Manurma's case, it was, you know, she was. At the midnight, she was taken by the army on the pretext that, you know, she is involved in a crime and then. She was raped and her body was found, you know, a few kilometers later away from her home and. So, so the woman, the woman within the community, they came out and they protested. You know, naked and they say that we are Manurma's mothers, so please Indian Army rape us. So these are the way the women are protesting. In Ofkurs Yadav case, this case is available on the Netflix, the movie is there, you can see that. The accused person was protected by the police and judiciary and yet he was murdered in the courtroom by the survivors. Who were frustrated by the system because, you know, the state is helping the accused. And not the women, despite all such laws. So. So in India, we have seen, you know, that we assume that once the law is being made, the justice will follow, but this is not happening. So ironically, in contemporary situation, we are living in a society where pain and sufferings are categorized into hierarchies. Based on caste, sex or religion of the victim and the abuser. Frequently, women issues are sidelined, so the pain of, you know, a woman being raped in home. Day in and day out by the so-called protectors in no way receives sympathy or empathy from. From the courts, from the society, from the police, we have seen the judgment in the Marathu rape case. The Delhi High Court, there was a kind of, you know, conflicting judgment, two judges, the both gave different kinds of judgment. Now the case is pending before the Supreme Court. So basically, our emeritor rape is not recognized as a crime in India till yet. So, so most of the institutions, they silence women victims and embolden men to create a culture of impunity. Where men feel entitled to violate the soul, the mind and the body of women as per their whims and fancies. So lastly, I will, you know, come to this point that, that, you know, there is entire debate on social media regarding. Hashtag not all men, to say that not all men are, you know, guilty of crime. Now, this is a response to discussion regarding misogyny and violence which blame men as abusers. The proponent of this phrase ignored the feminist voices which have been highlighting that violence is not a man versus a woman issue. It is about patriarchal oppression and the culture of impunity which harms the society at large. So this is depicted from the response of women who initiated hashtag yes, all women and hashtag meet a movement. Where women shared their experience of harassment and show how, you know, almost all women experience sexism, misogyny and assimilation. In some way or another. More specifically, if we talk about India, the culture, you know, which tolerate and normalize domestic violence. Which normalize dowry violence, which normalize son preference, honor killing, child marriages. Now, this kind of culture which I feel is guilty of perpetuating violence with impunity. Now, we have seen a few months back, there was a video which was circulated where a woman was raped. On the road and and nobody came to help her. So, so this is the kind of society where, where all men and women who stay silent, which I would say are, you know. Somehow complicit in the crime. So, not all men, but yes, all men and women who stay silent are complicit in the crime. Now, lastly, I will just end with, you know, with, you know, what should we do? Because in India, we have seen how the state and society are not only tolerating violence, but they are normalizing and legitimizing it. So, so what should we do? So we have to speak out, we have to resist violence, we refuse to stay silent, you know, till. Till our rights are assured. So, so we don't need false promises or lip services by the state. We demand concrete and collaborative actions and this is the demand of the women's movements since seventies, eighties, nineties. We have seen, you know, how a man has explained that how, you know, we have, women's movement has worked for. For, you know, for this issue. So we have to support intensity and resilience of women and I will just end with this, with this. You know, slogan leave no one behind, this has been given by United Nations to say that, you know, our responses must be inclusive. And so here I end, you know, we have to join hands in solidarity and support to end violence against women. And we can take the questions further, so I will just stop sharing this slide and we can take questions, yeah.
Thank you so much ma'am, we extend a heartfelt gratitude ma'am for the legal hands-on and interactive session and for sharing your insights with us. I would now like to invite Chair, our Chair Bhuti ma'am to kindly share her remarks.
Yeah, I think, Dr. Advocate Shalu Rigam, you have complimented what Kevia started. Her presentation on gender-based violence right from the time of Mathura rape case. And your recent newer challenges that we are facing because of the information technology-based violence, the surveillance, stalking. And giving permanency to the act of violence, as you said, that barbaric prank. When the video is made of the act and it is shared, it damages permanent. So that also is a very newer challenges and as you said, that we all have to come together and fight against this thing. Both civil society organization and the state have to, the way Majlis has been doing, I think, very. this thing, both civil society organization and the state have to, the way Majlis has been doing, I think, very important lesson that we have. That we need to replicate the model of Majlis all over the country. And that is why this capacity building of this N plus the demoralization that we are seeing because of massive backlash uh uh all over the world because of the uh and the very, very extremely gory and frightening form of misogyny that we are experiencing. I think against that, uh we need to bring this kind of efforts where at a local level, uh what uh groups are doing. So I think that needs to be, their voices need to be amplified and then all of us, wherever we are, whether you are in a formal sector or informal sector, whether you are in rural urban or tribal areas or whether you are in global north or global south, this is one issue that unites all of us and transnational solidarity is required. I think that case of France is extremely unnerving because uh uh if it it if we ignore it, if we keep remain silent, I think more and more man will be encouraged. In this case, the huntsman person, who do you trust? That's the question arises, no? When such things happen. So I think it's very important and the Korean feminists have also come up with a very important, giving the, giving them their own uh medicine, that if you are using, abusing technology, then we will also have, we'll use the technology for the collective defense of women. So I think it's very, very important.
Flavia, would you like to respond to Dr. Shalu Nikam's presentation?
I think, I think it was a very interesting uh presentation. She's taken a lot of trouble to put it together. Uh some issues are old and that we knew and she got in many new aspects of uh gender-based violence and I deeply appreciate that. I think it's, and also it's very interesting. I stayed on because I found it extremely interesting and contemporary that current issues and what's happening in France, what's happening in Iran, etcetera, on the entire issue of women's dignity, gender-based violence, etcetera, I think have been extremely important and I'm sure our participants will gain a lot by her presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, ma'am. Uh now I would like to open the floor for questions. Uh the participants can either use the Q and A box or they can raise their hand, use the raise the hand feature and ask the questions.
Abhitiji, Janaji, would you like to share your experiences wherever you are? Yeah, please go ahead.
Uh ma'am, I have a question. So uh very recently, we could see the Indian mainstream media easily getting uh you know, succumb to sensationalism and intentionally or unintentionally uh the victims' identities are being easily, you know, uh disposed, disposed out to the nature, uh to the uh news audience. So uh is there any proper way that we could, I uh by, you know, by legal terms or by uh any other way we could uh reduce this or uh have have say, you know, curb it at uh all cost?
Well, ma'am, Flavia ma'am can answer it best because we in law, we have this provision that uh victims' identity should not be revealed. But you know, yeah, the Indian media is playing a different kind of role. So ma'am.
At the same time, so many survivors, parents and this thing, those who have been killed, like Jyoti Singh's father, when they called her Nirmala, Nirbaya. It was Jyoti Singh's parents who said that why shouldn't just say Jyoti Singh, our daughter has not done anything wrong, wrong. The blame should be on the accused. Same thing that lady in France, she is saying that she has come out openly, she is campaigning. She doesn't want to be anonymous and hide in the secrecy where she can be eliminated. Because that one thing is there when you are known as a public figure, it is very difficult to kill you, no? That's what that lady in Kolkata also said, that she was a singer in a nightclub and she was gang raped, no? And the band were very powerful and they, the police asked her to to remain anonymous and she said no. Anonymity would be elimination in her case because the people, the same thing Bhavri Devi also said. If Bhavri Devi been alone anonymous by now, she had, she would have been eliminated by those powerful rapists, no? So I think the main thing is that whether it should be in camera or or you should anonymization. Always anonymization doesn't help. And that is what the victims have, this was our central demand uh in nineteen eighty. But last forty years have shown that in so many cases where even in Akuiyada's case, all survivors came out when they killed him. They came to the court and they killed him. So they they were exposed and these were the women from the community. They they would have been ostracized by their caste group, by their extended family, by their kin. But they did not what they wanted the world to know that they were not at fault. This man who was a rogue man who raped them was at fault. So I think we should, the latency should be left to the women. And I, that is my answer. That's what I, Flavia, what do you feel?
Yeah, I agree with you, Viputhi. What was the name of the Kolkata victim? I forgot.
Doctor. Her her parents also gave her name.
No, what's her name? I forgot. Not doctor. Uh earlier case.
Ahah, singer, no? That rose. Her daughter is now fighting the case.
Yeah. Uh so I also believe from the beginning, I've always believed that uh why should we not disclose identity, but it's left to individual women. Some uh face terrible backlash in the community, in their immediate community. And so even in law books, when the case is reported, now her name is not there. Earlier, it used to be there. In the case, at least in the case files, it used to be there. Law reporters, it was to be there. But now it is not there.
Yeah.
But even then, media does so many tricks to expose her against her wishes. I remember in the Shakti Mills case. Uh they went to her building and photographed the building and put it in the press. And so that uh everybody comes to know about her identity, her family, etcetera. So media for media, it is very sensational and everybody is very curious, who is the girl, who is the victim, who is the survivor, etcetera. And this uh sensationalism is what we oppose. And that is why the law has said that not to reveal her identity. But if she wants to reveal it, uh then it's up to her. I remember when the Shakti Mills case, which we were following, the two uh gang rape cases that we were very closely following and giving her the support, etcetera. Uh the girls had to come in burka. Not only she was wearing burka, but all the police were also wearing burka because there's so much media outing was happening. So uh and then she was petrified because she wanted to live after this a normal life, which she is leading now. And she didn't want to be ostracized and be known for this uh rape case. So fortunately, uh her identity was not revealed. But I agree with Viputhi that there are people who want to reveal their identity and they should be allowed to reveal. And those who are uh afraid of revealing their identity, they have to be protected. And that's what the law is saying.
Yeah. Her name was Suzette Jordan. She was an Indian lady and it was known as the Park Street rape case, gang rape case. And she refused to be anonymous, though she was advised by the police, she said that's illegal. She would be eliminated by those predators, no? Yeah. Now her daughter is fighting. She died in two thousand fifteen. Her daughter is continuing the, this thing, the case is not progressing. She is fighting, daughter is fighting.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Uh I would now like to ask the participants if we have any more questions about the same.
Jana Chakrabarti.
Uh yeah, yeah, I have a follow-up to uh you you know, in cases where the, you know, victims are actually exposed to uh public scrutiny, uh in that case, even, you know, even uh once after their justice has been delivered or uh or even when the, you know, when the trial is over, they are still, you know, perpetuated to, uh you know, violence or they've been always uh been exposed to look, uh you know, they they are mostly looked differently by the society. So how uh how do we actually bridge the gap and uh you know, give them that normalcy that and and normalcy and that acceptance that, you know, the life has to go on and uh and there is nothing uh you know, wrong from your part uh as a survivor.
I think Majlis has created a community, so many survivors who are, they have their own, like a new family, it is a chosen family. Or even Bhavri Devi, she has never left alone. She is always in a group of few CL members of four generations. Silly feminist, like Asabit or uh uh feminist of Shalu Nikam's age or my daughter's age or even young women, all of them see her as an icon, no? So I think first is that that getting out of isolation and I think Majlis, you can give your example, Flivia. How you are, you have created community of survivors so that they don't feel.
Yeah, we have uh in fact regular meetings every six months, etcetera, calling our clients, coming together, sexual violence lines as well as domestic violence lines, domestic violence lines and their daughters, uh sexual violence victims and their mothers. Uh so coming together to form a community and this is very important, to take out the stigma. Because when it's happening, you think it's only happening to you and you are the only one that why this is happening, etcetera. But when you see others and there are a lot of women who that's happened to them and they're fighting, uh it gives a lot of, a lot of courage and a sense of community. And I agree with Viputhi that we are creating the sense of community among the survivors at various levels and that, and that's what is sustaining them. So creating their networks, creating groups for between them so that they can uh support each other. So we cannot only see it as a victim and stigmatization, but we have to also look at positive interventions and creating community for support.
Thank you so much, ma'am. This was a very interactive session. Uh it's always a pleasure to learning from you and and also, you know, uh for this inspiring and engaging talk with us. Uh Madam Chair, maybe now proceed with the formal word of thanks.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And the only thing I would like to, in my concluding remark, I just want to, would like to once again recite my favorite verses by Maya Angelou. That you may write me down in history with your bitter and twisted lies. You may trudge me in the very dirt, but still like dust I'll rise. Does my sassiness upset you? Why are you beset with gloom? Cause I walk like I have got oil wells pumping in my living room. Just like moons and like suns with the certainty of tides, just like hopes springing high, I will rise. Did you want to see me broken? Bowed head and lowered eyes, shoulders falling down like tear drops weakened by my soulful cries. Does my hotiness offend you? Don't you take it awful hard, cause I laugh like I have got gold mines digging in my own backyard. You may shoot me with your words, you may cut me with your eyes, you may kill me with your hatefulness. But I still, like air, I'll rise. Does my sexiness upset you? Does it come as a surprise? That I dance like I have got diamonds at the meeting of my thighs? Out of the hearts of history shame, I rise. Up from a past that's rooted in pain, I rise. I am black, I am a black ocean, leaping and wide, welling and swelling I bear in the tide. Leaving behind nights of terror and fear, I rise. Into a daybreak that is wondrously clear, I rise, bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave. I am the dream and the home of the slave. I rise, I rise, I rise. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Those were some very beautifully written lines and reiterated very beautifully. That was very empowering.
You was also a survivor of sexual violence, incestuous sexual sexual violence.
Surely.
Yeah. Maya Angelou.
Moving on forward with the formal vote of thanks, as we come to the end of the third day of L P P Y F, Law and Public Policy Youth Fellowship Cohort Four Point O, Winter Twenty Twenty Four, theme inclusivity in peace and conflict resolution, rethinking policy, advocacy and implementation, an online national winter school program, a three-month immersive online law and public policy awareness certificate training course and internship program. I, Avi Sharma, researcher at IMPRI Impact and Policy Research Institute, would now like to propose the formal vote of thanks on behalf of IMPRI New Delhi. We are grateful to our Chair, Professor Vibhuti Patelji, and the experts for the Day Three Session, Advocate Flavia Agnes ji and Advocate Dr. Shalu Nikam ji for taking out their valuable time and for their thought-provoking insights on the topic. We thank all our participants who have raised pertinent questions and actively participated in today's deliberation. We look forward to welcoming you all on Day Four of the Certification Course on November twenty six, twenty twenty four. That is Tuesday tomorrow, featuring distinguished experts, Professor Naila Ali Khanji on interplay of gender, community and nationhood, reimagining peace in Kashmir. And Advocate Dr. Shalu Nikam ji on legal hands on an interactive session, followed by our creative project selection and discussion by our team. Uh we would be grateful if you watch us later on YouTube, listen to us on various podcasts and read our publications. We hope you continue to join in the future to our IMPRI Web Policy Talk and Web Policy Learning. Wishing you all a great day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Avi Sharma, for such a beautiful moderation.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Yeah. Taking the program forward.